I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably, indivisible, with every team and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the citizens of our country.
Now the indication by Commissioner Porter.
We pray ahead. Heavenly Father, we come before you today grateful for all the blessings you've provided each of us. We are thankful for our teachers, nurses, and doctors who are kind diligently caring for those most important to us. We pray you continue to bless them with courage and health as they continually give of themselves. We also come before you today with heavy hearts as we reflect upon the tragedy of nine eleven. We pray you help to heal our hearts as we remember all those who were affected and serve to protect our freedoms. I pray you help guide us as we work on local issues and make decisions without judgment and maintain the focus of the betterment of others in our community. We pray for our nation, the world, and our local community and one another. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Morning Commissioners. I'd like to welcome everybody that's here. First item of business is public comments. I hadn't received any written comments. Are there any public comments from the group present here in the commission chamber? Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
I have a statement to read. My name's Alvy Williams if you don't know me. I've been a member of the Joel Volunteer Fire Department for over thirty-eight years at no cost to Eddie County. Twenty-one of those years I led the Joel Fire Department as the fire chief. I first joined to help provide services to the citizens of Eddie County and to help the community. I spent my time and effort to get trained and to do the job that I was volunteered to do. As of August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, I resigned my position with Joel Fire Department along with six other senior active members of this department. Because we can no longer support the new policies that have been put in place by Eddie County Fire Rescue and the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Are there any other comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move to item number two, which is public hearing for ordinance twenty-one, one oh-six. Ordinance banning a non-exclusive franchise to Southwest Public Service Company.
I guess we need to open a public hearing. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
I entertain a motion to be opened a public hearing for zero twenty-one dash one oh-six.
Make that motion.
Motion second. Please call for the vote.
Bear.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Hetchen.
Yes, sir.
So, Steve, you have any comments? This is the franchise agreement that we've been working on with XL, who is the subsidiary of Southwestern Public Service. There it was. No, this is the formalization for this franchise agreement. I think as we understand the process, we presented the agreement at the last meeting for feedback. And this process will formalize that agreement and it'll be in place for ten years. County Attorney and I have looked at the agreement and we've had the terms. We've been able to get the terms that the county would like in terms of performance for XL and we have an interface with their public relations department with the county. Mr. Lachey is here with us today, except he wasn't feeling well yesterday and opted to stay away. An abundance of caution. So, anyway. You've seen the agreement before and I think staff is ready to formalize and get the county to consider approval. And if they approve, then we'll sign the agreement and move forward. We get Southwest, Southwestern utility to sign off and we're good to go. Anything else?
I've covered it.
Sorry.
Do we have any public comment on this? Or, I guess, do we have any questions?
No.
I think we can leave it.
Okay, I'll answer later. I guess public comment or the...
Are there any public comments related to the franchise agreement with XL? Seeing none, Mr. County Attorney, do you have any comments or questions?
Nothing additional. We did spend a lot of time going back and forth trying to get these terms worked out. And we think that where we are now is probably a pretty good place to be.
All right, Commission, comments and questions?
I have more questions.
All right.
I mean, they only have one. Jason, this gives you enough tools in your tool bag to do your business. You're going to agree with this whole thing as well?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it does require XL and SBS to conform to our current right-of-way policies, which we wrote that and was approved by the board, which allows us to control the right-of-way within the county.
Your good chair. Okay. So I entertain a motion that we... How do we do that? What are we approving here? I guess approve ordinance twenty-one, one oh-six? Same thing? Okay. entertain it.
Second.
Motion second. Please call for the vote.
Bear.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
My Hetchen.
Yes.
Thank you Commissioners. Formality of the process is what it is. I appreciate your patience in getting that pushed forward. Next item of business on...
I make the motion that we adjourn that.
Oh, yeah, we better do that.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion second. Please call for the vote.
Bear.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
My Hetchen.
Yes.
All right. Now we can move to the next item of the agenda. Presentation of Arrowhead Ad Campaign by Red Rocket, Mr. Hooper.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I asked Arrowhead to come in and give a presentation on kind of the numbers that they're receiving on the Arrowhead presentation that they're putting out to different counties. And in that meeting, when we were discussing it to put the ad campaign out, we had selected a... I can't remember exactly how many counties, but it was kind of the counties that we were having trouble getting into. And so we put this ad campaign out there, kind of showing them what the numbers are. And basically, the campaign is Paid For By is kind of what we named it. But Arrowhead's here to give a presentation on what numbers they're seeing back on social media and some of the ads that they're putting out there and get any feedback from you all that you might have.
One, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I have one correction. I'm not with Arrowhead. I'm with Red Rocket. It's the Arrowhead study that we're promoting after the county.
I think that's better because I don't want to have to go through all the methodology.
Yes.
Here for a while, so just that's a bit of speed.
It's Paid For... Quickly, our company came up with a campaign named Paid For By. And we kind of took that from the lodgers tax that we use in Eddie County. Because whenever you use lodgers tax money, you have to put it at the bottom of your advertising, Paid For By Lodgers Tax of Eddie County, right? But wouldn't it be nice if we could put Paid For By underneath everything that oil and gas revenue went to Paid For so that people really knew where the revenue was coming from? And that was kind of our methodology for calling the campaign Paid For By. How much of the state of New Mexico is Paid For By Oil and Gas Revenue? And so that was the campaign title, headed to Paid For By. And after coming up with that, we have now, with Mr. Hooper's help and Ms. Strong, we have started identifying things that have been paid for by oil and gas in New Mexico. And specifically, it's sixteen counties that we're promoting to right now. Sixteen counties that have been, as Mr. Hooper called them, I believe, unresponsive to hearing out what the Arrowhead study really does. So we're running ads in sixteen counties across New Mexico with the title Paid For By. And we're showing the rest of the state what really is being paid for with oil and gas revenue. To date, and I believe we're just over a month in, we have reached one hundred and nineteen thousand three people, approximately five times each, for a total of six hundred and five thousand impressions. So we're over half a million views on this campaign in these sixteen counties. So as you can imagine, we're getting some serious penetration into the counties that just haven't typically supported oil and gas.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Do you have that broken down by the counties that you're presenting to?
I will get that number to Mr. Hooper. I do have it. Not in front of me at this moment. But I can tell you exactly how many in each county. Yes, sir.
That would be interesting to me.
Yes. And I can even further that by how many men and women have seen it as well for what that's worth. The first thing that we... The first problem that we ran into was immediately, because we're going into sixteen counties that don't support oil and gas, the first problem is just an overwhelming amount of comments back. I mean, it's a social media ad campaign, right? So anybody that sees it can comment on it because we have the comments open right now. And so it was an overwhelming amount of comments back, all negative. We haven't had too much in support of, but that's, again, we're running in sixteen counties that don't support us. And I'll read you a couple of the negative comments and I'll try to slur the words that aren't proper. If this were clean energy, you wouldn't need a propaganda campaign. Propaganda. Do you know we all die if we don't respond to global warming now? Did you know New Mexico is... And this is where they get interesting. Did you know New Mexico is fiftieth in education compared to all forty-nine other states? Perhaps the current model isn't working. And I believe that this is coming from people that are just simply uneducated by the oil and gas.
It's obvious that the education is...
And here's the one that makes us laugh every time and they say, "And you all have some of the..." Forgive me. "And you all have some of the crappiest roads in New Mexico." And I think that just goes to show that, yes, we do have bad roads and that's exactly what we're trying... That's one of the things we're trying to get funded. And so really, at this point, we are now taking these negative comments and we are using those as fuel for our own campaign because we want to address their concerns. These people do not know the truth of what's really happening with the money. And we feel that that's the next direction of the campaign is simply to educate sixteen counties that don't support oil and gas and maybe help them understand why they should a little bit more. And again, we're over half a million reached in under just about one month's time right now.
And what we're putting out there is the Arrowhead study itself or just like the synopsis of Paid For By?
It's the synopsis of Paid For By and as of the last month, there has been data, things that we can find that have actually been paid for by oil and gas. So it's not the specific data from that. We use that to identify the sixteen counties that need the education. And then now we're using data such as, did you know in this county, we paid for forty percent of your school district with oil and gas revenue? And that's what the information we're putting out there now.
So it's tailored specifically to each county?
We do have... So we have a generic campaign that's just talking about oil and gas and what it's doing for the state. And then we do have specific content tailored for each county. The problem is, we don't want to... We don't ever want to be out it. So you can't say that oil and gas paid for a hundred percent of a school district because that simply isn't true. So we don't ever want to say what anybody can factually check against us. We only want to put out real facts that can be proven. And so that becomes a bit of a problem because, as Mr. Hooper can attest, whenever you start trying to track down where the revenues actually go, it gets difficult to find where every dollar is sent with. So we're doing the best we can with finding facts.
Well, I appreciate that because I want to be able to back up, you know, what we're putting out there with factual information.
Right. Yes.
Is there any questions?
No, I would a hundred percent agree with him.
Correct to say the sixteen counties are all connected to the Rio Grande Corridor?
I can get you the list of... And again, I apologize for not being prepared for that, but I can get you the list of the exact sixteen counties that we identified. You remember?
A lot of them are within that area.
Yes, sir. Don, I have them right here. I apologize. Rio, Rio, Riva, Pales, Grant, Grant's, Dona Annam, Kinley, Santa Fe, San Miguel, Valencia, Torrance, Tendible, Mora, Los Alamos, Bernaleo. And then we have them going to all the counties.
I think we presented the...
So Santa Fe is not supported?
Really good.
Strong reception.
Yes, sir. The next phase for us, and I believe that we're going to start working on this. The next phase for us is to start getting videos of... And I'm hoping that we can maybe find some of you Commissioners that are willing to get in front of the camera. But to start recording videos of leadership from different counties, both in four states and against... Not states, but in four counties and against counties. Leadership that will testify to the oil and gas revenue that they're receiving. And again, we want to state it in a way that's... We don't want to rub their noses in it and say, "All of this was paid for by oil and gas." Because that's not going to get us anywhere to go with confrontation. We want to say this, that we need your help supporting oil and gas so that we can continue to pay for the rest of the state's revenue essentially is the message we want to get across. So video is the next step for us.
I do have one question if I may. Is there anything that you're putting out there to show the improvements or the... Because climate change is obviously going to be one of your negatives that you hear a lot.
I would do, yes.
To show the footprint of gas in Texas and New Mexico as opposed to Russia and Saudi, whom the current president has asked to ramp up the oils, to kind of show, hey, look, here's our footprint and here's what oil and gas is doing to lower their carbon footprint. Here's all the other players in the world. To kind of pull us some back from them and have... I'd love to hear their comment on that.
I'll be honest, we have not put that information out there and I appreciate that and we will look into it. Again, I want to find the facts about it so we can show everything, but yes, I think that's a great suggestion and we will move forward with that.
I think this is absolutely wonderful.
Thank you.
Wes for getting the motion and appreciate Red Rocket for executing there. Thank you very much.
All right. Next item on the agenda is IFB, IFB bill one, IFB coming on that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. We selected for IFB twenty-one-ten for demographic analysis and census mapping on August thirteenth of twenty-twenty-one. The county did receive one bid from New Mexico Demographic Research. The staff is recommending a award after some clarification on two of the bid forms. One being additional cost. We just want to clarify with New Mexico Demographic that they will complete everything in the scope of work before charging us as additional cost. In the scope of work, we did list a certain number of maps and everything that need to be provided first. So we want some clarification before we move forward. And also on the bid form four, I'm sorry, compliance with regulatory agencies, all of the questions were answered no without any clarification. So we would need the clarification as to an explanation of why they were all answered no. And we did specify that we did need them to explain if they did answer no and there was no explanation provided. But with those two clarifications, we would be willing to move forward and recommend award to New Mexico Demographic.
Questions are asking clarification to all related to, have you had... Have you had lawsuits? Have you been encumbered? And looking at it, it would appear that they misread the question and answered incorrectly. But they answered no and it requires them to clarify. Have you had any of these encumbrances or issues? And so I asked Commissioner Bear to reach out. So again, we want the work done per the lump sum, per the scope of work. Anything beyond the scope of work, we'd be willing to pay as addressed in the bid response. But all the requirements in the scope of work would be under the lump sum price. And if that's how New Mexico Demographics has addressed that, we're good to go.
And I did contact him and he said that would be fine. I think he had a wondering as far as why that was not within the... And not knowing the legalities of all that we did in the first part. And he said, yes, he's good and he's ready to go. I think his opening sentence said he would take it before he brought the other stuff. But that said, the answers to those questions, I thought he was going to give back with some clarification on that, so.
If you have a chance to visit with him again, you would maybe reinforce that point. It's a point... We don't think there's any issue, but it's better to have that documented that there's no issue and that the responses were just misinterpreted or something, so.
We can reach out again because we will need that in writing.
Okay. Can we approve it with the caveat that as soon as we receive clarification on these, it will be awarded?
And with that being said, Commissioner, are you... Is the board going to accept his no responses with explanation? Or would you not want to move forward if he has all those no responses? And I'm not sure if you guys have seen that bid form, but it's compliance with regulatory agencies. So I don't know if you want to look at it very quickly to see because if you guys are willing to move forward with his answers of no, whether he provides a response or not, just so you guys know what you guys are going to be approving with those explanations.
We'll make more here.
Because most of the time everyone says yes to these because they're saying, yes, we have no issues. We're not, you know, we're in compliance with everything. We don't have any outstanding issues.
What's our...
Lawsuit settlements, stuff like that.
What's our timeframe on this? When does this have to be put in motion?
There's not...
Depends on how long it takes to complete. The work has to be done by December thirty-first.
Oh, okay.
Let me ask this question. Under the Puritan Code, were they responsive in their bid?
No, we could have deemed them non-responsive, but we reached out for clarification because we also have that option as a county. Before you deem them non-responsive, you have the option to reach out for clarification and that's what we tried to do.
And that's where they still...
But they would be that... Once they respond, then they would...
Yeah.
They're responding to that that we're complying with. We assume so, Puritan Code. We assume so. But until we have a...
Right. And also note that, yes, it's due December thirty-first, that there are multiple public meetings that need to be held for...
Prior to that.
Yes, you guys are going to have some homework to do to get those districts to where you want them.
I guess since we got one bid, what would the alternative?
We would deem them non-responsive and you can go back out again. We'd have to advertise for a minimum of ten days.
Doesn't make sense. I mean, we're talking about being in a time crunch right now.
So what we really need is New Mexico Demographics to be responsive to the questions so that we can make the award and get started.
Exactly.
As I said, we'll see us just because we're in a hurry to make a bad decision.
I... Well...
But I agree with you. I mean, what else do we do? But I would like to...
We got one bid.
Yeah.
On a public bid and from what I hear, their response, their no responses, they actually gave a response. It just wasn't as broad as we wanted.
Well, what I think is, if anyone else gets that, those questions answered, yes, we're good.
Like, because most agencies are in compliance.
He checked no and there's a good reason he checked no and you guys don't know that reason? So it's your call, but, you know, we'll have a meeting in two weeks and that's part of the reason is...
Because if they reached out to him by email right away and he still has not responded. And that's part of the reason he was not in line to the answer no.
But I also, I want to understand why no. And maybe to...
Maybe it's just in his communication.
I'm just saying that, you know, what's the alternative?
But why have we not had a response?
Have we tried to call him or... Yeah. So it's not just by email?
No, I wish I was more quiet.
Okay.
And you've been doing that for a week or two now?
I've been doing it since we received the bid. I reached out the very next day and I did reply back to that. And then I let him know that we were coming to the meeting and that we were going to have questions about these two forms. And I have not received anything since then.
Maybe. All right.
Commissioner Barrett spoke with him last week.
I'm not sure which way to jump on this. I've been in this from the get-go, but I don't think it's unreasonable for some clarification on these questions either. We're learning how do we move on. I mean, the time is getting short on some of this stuff. If we don't...
I think the way to do it is we tell it. Hey, you've got five days to respond.
For procurement purposes, the other option is to, you can't go out and get three quotes. Because it is under fifty thousand dollars.
Well, what's the timeframe on that? How many days? Do you still like...
Depending on, you can get three quotes a day.
Yeah. Well, we did give them one quote for the first time, so.
Well, and depending on how important those answers are. There's some questions, but the answers that come important and I don't think we can move forward without it. Sure, proper.
Just pass that page to him.
I think it was probably he totally misread it. However, if he didn't, that's a big thing.
So I said, just table it until next meeting, if you are my opinion. You want to make that motion or... There's no more comments?
I'm okay with that. I'm also okay to give, you know...
He just read it wrong, yeah.
Can't really give him five days because...
Well, I would say...
If he just read it wrong, he shouldn't still...
They're ready to respond.
They know he should correct it.
He should correct it. Yeah. I agree.
If you want, you could make the motion to approve if all those questions were yes, he just misread them and he agrees to the twenty-two lump sum and there's obviously no issue. Or you could also approve with the condition that it would be brought back if some of those questions were no. That way you guys can review to make sure you're comfortable with his explanation if some of those questions are left with a no answer.
I'll say...
I think what she just said makes exact sense.
Option two.
Option.
So say that motion again.
So you can make the motion to approve with the condition that, number one, he agrees that lump sum and delivering everything under the scope of work. And also, if all his answers turn up being yes, he just misread them. And then if he says no, some of those questions, those answers, those questions are no, and here's my explanation, then at that point, we can bring it back to you for further review so you're comfortable before making that full approval.
I think that's the way to do it.
Yeah. Both of these, you can tell the way it's written, it's easy to misunderstand after a question, but...
It is, but it says if no, explain.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's the same bid form that we've used hundreds of times. We've gotten the right response to these times, so.
And Darlene, what are your thoughts on the whole deal here? You're the one.
I just want you guys to be able to have time to do it. I mean, you will. You'll get it done and it'll just be crammed. Especially if the changes are minimal and you guys can all agree that the public meetings usually go pretty well. But yeah, I mean, if you're not happy, the main thing was all the extras that were added when in the scope of the bid it was included. So I wasn't quite sure about that. As long as he gets it done, we'll provide him everything and...
And the scope, we worked hard to make sure that it was inclusive and it is. So at the end of the day, the commission district boundary alignments are the important elements. And those will flow based on where growth has occurred, the changes in precincts, those kinds of things. I don't think the changes are going to be dramatic, but there will be changes.
There will be additions because we have grown and I will be bringing a resolution next meeting with those additional precincts that have been added to Eddie County. Some splits because we had such a high turnout in the last general election, the last two generals. And that, along with the growth in the county, has caused us to add additional precincts. So I will bring that to the next meeting. Then whoever you award the bid to will have that info... that information. Um, they're bound by law, what they can do with your districts, they have to be contiguous, they have to weigh all kinds of things and, um, so with the information we provide them, then he should, that's, the ball will be in their court to provide you guys with the plans, hopefully that you can choose one and move on. And then we'll get those changes implemented at the end of the year and they'll go in for the next commission, uh, election next year.
But the only thing I think is if those answers are in fact correct on all that stuff, I think we'd heard something about this all through the.
Well, if you read the questions, the questions or the stuff that involve, uh, environmental, involve, uh, EEOC, that type of stuff, you would have heard.
I agree with that mildly. Problem is that we haven't had a response.
But I like, I like what Roberta says. Let's, let's make that motion and move forward, uh, with this. And if everything turns out, we've already got things off the board to get it done.
I agree.
Alright. I will entertain a motion that.
The Commissioner, uh, will move forward with approving the IFB twenty-one ten to New Mexico demographic research with the condition that the answers are all yes and that he will provide everything under the scope of work for the twenty-two thousand dollar lump sum. If those answers are no, then they will be brought back to commission next meeting for review and approval then.
I make that motion.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, moving into the trading agenda.
Now we get to work.
Item number one, approve the commission meeting minutes for August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one.
Submit.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the commission meeting minutes for August seventeenth. Please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rodova?
Yes.
Henry?
I'm staying.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is the approval of the expense report for August twenty twenty-one.
Questions? Do we have a motion to approve August approval report twenty twenty-one?
Submit.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rodova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, the, the last item and number one is purchase card approval for July twenty twenty-one.
Do we have any questions? Do we have a motion to approve the P-card approval report for July twenty twenty-one?
No questions.
No questions, I make that motion.
Motion second. And a second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rodova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, item two, the treasurer's report is there for your information from Ms. Crew, County Treasurer. Item number three, uh, the revenue report from Ms. Roberta.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the July twenty twenty-one revenue report, for grocery receipts, the county collected one point nine million dollars. Ooh. Which was about fifty-six percent higher than, uh, this time last year. Uh, we were about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars over our monthly budgeted target for grocery receipts tax, so again, still on target for grocery receipts. For oil and gas, the county collected three point five million dollars total for production and equipment. Um, back in July, that was for the April business month, so we were about high sixties for oil prices and, um, this particular July distribution, we were running about fifteen point three million barrels, um, of oil. And we were pretty high on the gas, we're about ninety-three million units at about almost four dollars per unit. Uh, so pretty high, again, well over our monthly target of two, almost two point one million, so we're about one point four million dollars over to start off for July. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions? Entertained a motion that we approved July twenty twenty-one revenue report.
I just like that motion.
And I'll second that.
I didn't get, I don't, I didn't have a motion.
I'll second.
Motion second.
I thought that.
Well, it was.
That was appreciation.
It was. Okay, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rodova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you. Good, good start to revenue here. I was pleased by the grocery receipts increase, which last fiscal year, we were actually under our budget for grocery receipt tax, so this was a good, a good sign. Next item is budget versus actual for July revenue expenses, Ms. Roberta.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for July twenty twenty-one, we've collected about twenty-four point nine million dollars in revenue and about twenty-six point four million dollars have been expensed. Um, at this time, we should be about eight percent on both revenue and expenses. General fund revenue is right at that eight percent collected. For expenses, we're quite a bit over at thirty percent, but obviously we make all of our transfers at the beginning of the year, so without transfers, we're, we're way under that. We're at six percent for general fund expenditures, so well under our eight percent target for expenditures. Um, again, road department revenue, they've collected majority of theirs, but almost sixteen million dollars, fifteen million dollars is transfers, so they still have about ten percent revenue to collect and they're about three percent expensed for the public works.
That's to get them their line items so they can work through the remainder of the season in this car.
Okay. Question, budget versus actual. Okay. Entertained a motion, we approve budget versus actual July revenue and expenses.
Second.
Motion in two seconds, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rodova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. I think we have a good budget. I think year on year, it's proven, proven to serve us well and the departments are all behind and supportive, so I think we're in good shape again for this coming fiscal year.
I know, I know we just breezed over all that, but that is exceptional information and a great job by, by all the county. I know we, we've got a lot to do, so we feel like I'm moving things quickly here, but, but we, we do appreciate that. Appreciate the, the, the conservative plan by, by all county influence.
The next item, um, number five, discussion direction possible, vote on fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one surplus, Ms. Roberta.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, we bring this to you around this time every year for our surplus. Uh, last fiscal year, we ended the fiscal year with a little bit over four million dollar surplus. Um, so we're bringing it back to you to determine where you guys would like to put that surplus. Um, management is making a request to move all of that money to the capital improvement funds for future capital expenditures. Um, if you want to move that in the near future, all needs to be brought back as an agenda request to move that back to where you guys would like it to.
And would you transfer that back to the vote?
Correct.
If that's what we choose to do, or what you choose to do.
The capital improvement fund is essentially a safe haven that allows us latitude to move around.
That's what we've done since past.
And our ten percent savings from last year is still in there.
We, we have some. We'll, we'll talk a little bit about it later, but, you know, with our road projects, we've taken care of the majority of the first half of the prioritized work and we're now working on the second half of that. In the current fiscal year, we're about to finish our FEMA work, um, in the next fiscal year. And so, and we have some special projects that have been road related that are working that are well in progress. So, looking to what the needs for the county are in the future and some, having some discussions about, do we save for those? Do we do other things for those? How big are they? How much do we need? So, th- those are the kinds of things that we would look to in the future, um, provided that your priorities are taken care of and addressed and where these other big project cost numbers fit in your priorities. Right, so that's the discussion, but if we put it in here, it's, it's our, um, safe haven, that's a good word.
It just separates it a lot easier from general fund and it's not mixed in with general fund.
General fund and recurring costs.
And it can't be swept by the state, is that correct?
Correct.
If that's, I mean, the.
I don't think they'd be sweeping much down here.
Well, if they need to. I have money. Think we're like, ask Hilton, have that money.
Yes, it did. We'll, we'll talk a little bit more about that later here, but yes, sir, you are correct. You've spoken wisely.
Yeah. I'm happy, great.
I'll entertain a motion that we move the surplus of four million twenty-one thousand four ninety-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents to the capital improvement fund. Motion second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rodova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberta. Thank you, Commissioners. Alright, next item, certify the tax rates for property tax year twenty twenty-one.
One more, Jim.
It's the annual surprise. Um, there's really not a lot of change in the tax rates this year. Uh, you notice curls bad, the first page is curls bad in, the curls bad in res is just, you know, point two nine six, doesn't make much of a difference. The only large difference that we did have was in the loving, page three on your loving, they went down two mil. And the reason they went down two mil is because their debt service went from three, uh, from six point three to three point eight. They had less debt, they'd been paying off their debt really quickly. Um, if you look at the last page, I'm so sorry, in column number three, the difference is showing a reference. That should be six million one eighty-five, one forty. Everybody wants, needs that exact number. Otherwise, also, with yield control, the tax rate on res, I'm just using the front page, went from five point four seven one to five point three seven two, to where your non-res is at seven and a half. That just shows you we're growing and so our tax rate keeps going down. I hate yield control. I had to call DFA on some questions and they don't even like yield control. Um, that just means the more you grow, the less, the rate, the rate keeps going down. It's a formula that's, God bless America, it's way too much for me to understand. I'm sure not a mathematician.
Ms. Jim, I've tried to explain yield control to me with Melissa.
Uh-huh.
A year and a half ago and it's like, wow. How in the wide world would you ever, ever understand that? And I think it's by design, you can't.
I, it's probably true. But it's, it's just so, and I understand the more you grow, I mean, it, it's, it works really well if you're decreasing in values. That's when it comes into play, because that way then you're not having a big tax, tax reduction. You know, you're not getting less money than you really should have, but, oh lordy.
But in this sense, because you're growing.
It keeps going down.
The, the lower rate, your, your net outcome is about the same year over year.
Right, they don't want any, yeah, they don't want any.
They offset each other.
Yeah, and that should be a seven point five, just like your non-res. And so we're, we're losing a lot of money every year because, because of that. Almost two mil. So, anyway. You'll be, go ahead.
The, the process is the commission has to certify these rates so that, and we're within the required timeframe from when they were issued and reviewed and you provided them that this is what they are, then we have to send those back to, to DFA, TRD.
Right. Rhonda does that. Rhonda's been out for a couple of weeks with, with some illnesses, so it's like this is the first, first year I've had to do this, it was quite interesting. And that's all back to her.
Love you, Ms. Rhonda.
Exactly. But something else that we learned this year is that, say, um, Pegas Valley, PVAC, you know, has a lot of artesia, affects a lot of artesia. And so does Eagle Draw. And those, you know, extra things that, uh, our northern part of this county gets to pay for. But like, uh, how do I want to say this? Uh, PVAC always does a complete form, they charge for it. But this is the first time I ever remember that yield control affected them. So it's only three point nine six or something. They're still going to get the same amount of money, but yield control affected them too. That's, that's the first time ever. And so, and so did Eagle Draw, it affected those two. I hadn't called, I called Jack and I said, did you decrease your budget? And he said, no. Did you decrease how much you, no.
So the yield control is a state statute, um, that's been around for a while. This is the consequence of that, a state statute.
Right.
For any county this year.
For every county in the state, I mean, every county has to, has that part. So we're just here for you guys to say please and thank you and please bless it.
Thank you for putting this together. It's very tedious.
And if you have any questions.
Heard about.
And if you have any questions about, you know, what's tech, what's in, what's out, you know, we're just, any general question, just let us know.
Second. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Motion is second to certify the twenty twenty-one property tax rates. Please call, please call for the vote.
You made the motion.
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rodova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You are smarter than the rest of us. We do not understand you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, item number seven. An endorsement of the New Mexico Department of Transportation, letters of appreciation, Mr. Hooper.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, uh, this letter is just an appreciation for the grant funding that, uh, we were just awarded through NMDOT. Uh, the county and staff had submitted, submitted an application for six million dollars and in that application, we didn't know what, um, what they would award or what type of funding they had available. And so in that application, we broke it down to two, four and six million, breaking phase three into three different phases. And we were awarded five point seven million with a match of three hundred thousand. Um, when we submitted it, uh, it goes to our Surtipo, they raid and rank them and then from there it goes to District Two, they raid and rank them there and then from there it goes up on up to Secretary Sandoval and Deputy Secretary Reese. We were approved at District Two level for four point five million. And once it got to Secretary Sandoval and Secretary Reese, they understand the need for our roads down here and so they bumped it up to five point seven and with that, uh, three hundred thousand dollar match, so we're very grateful for that. They did cut a hundred million plus, a hundred and eleven million, um, of other projects that were submitted for and, and we saw an increase in it, so, uh, it's, uh, felt very.
So the three letters you have, there are to State Secretary Sandoval, Assistant Secretary Reese and District Engineer.
Sanchez.
Sanchez. So we'd like them to know how much we appreciate them, how much you appreciate them.
We do. We do. Thanks very much. We appreciate that. And I've had a friend.
It's, it's a great relationship that, that Wes and Jason and others continue to cultivate. Um, and we'll talk a little bit more about it. Wes and Jerry and, and Roberta and I, Jason and Matt, to talk a little bit more about if you make investment in any county, here's what you get for it, here's what we do with it. So.
Yes, sir. And the other thing is it usually takes for this type of funding, uh, and since Secretary Sandoval has been appointed to that position, he's changed a lot of things around to where it expedites these projects. Um, usually for this type of funding, it would take three years to get approved and get the funding. So this is, this is getting done within about six to eight months.
Very efficient.
Yes.
So we asked for six and we got five point seven.
Well, the, the total is six. We got five point seven. There's a match with it of three hundred thousands.
That's a, that's a typical requirement, but maybe I'd better.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
Well, I'll gladly entertain a motion that we approve the endorsement letters to New Mexico DOT.
So move.
Motion is second, please call for the vote.
I'm sorry, I missed both of those. Who made the motion?
Secretary.
We did the second, sir.
Beer should be.
All right, Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rendova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Wes. And good job with the monies. That's awesome. All right. Item number eight, reclassification of vacant position. Receptionist educator to DWI screener treatment provider, Ms. Cynthia.
Good morning to each of you. I, uh, for you this morning, asking for reclassification of an open position. When it comes to treatment, screening, and assessment, that's a highly skilled position, requires license by the state of New Mexico. And at the DWI program, we don't just see DWI offenders. They are required, all convicted DWI offenders are required to have an assessment with us. And we see offenders from first offense through seventh offense, which, uh, fourth and subsequent are felony offenses. In the past year, um, all judges and many attorneys have referred offenders to us for crimes such as public nuisance. Civil issues such as child custody. We don't assess a person's fitness as a parent. We do look at them as whether or not they have substance use disorder. That would interfere with their ability to parent a child. We also see reinstatement evaluations for out of district court individuals who have been revoked for subsequent DWIs and are planning to get their license back without the interlock. We've seen aggravated battery, disorderly conduct, domestic violence, battery on a police officer, minor possession, minor allowing self-to-be-served criminal trespass, battery on a household member, possession of controlled substance, and trafficking controlled substance. We see all kinds of people for all kinds of things with the DWI program. I am requesting that this position be reclassified because we need it. Our county is growing. Alcohol sales are out. Marijuana has been legalized for recreational use. And impaired driving is impaired driving, no matter the substance. Uh, this would be a grant funded position covering the salary and benefits. Uh, for sixteen pay periods for the remainder of this fiscal year. Can we find, uh, somebody that is qualified for this position? I hope so. Once again, New Mexico has very high standards for their counseling licenses. And I have a wonderful treatment team, would put them up against anybody. We have two under contract that are licensed. That's Phyllis Luna and Eddie Sanchez. Myself and Deborah Hampton are licensed counselors. I'm the DWI program director. She's the assistant director. Treatment assessment is not all we do, but it's all good. So I stand for any questions.
So is this, are you thinking of moving somebody into this position or you're going to be advertising?
We will be advertising.
And then what are the certification requirements for this?
Uh, well, a license as a, um, substance abuse counselor through the state of New Mexico. Every, uh, that requires such, um, an advanced degree. It also requires about a thousand hours of alcohol specific training, um, counseling sessions, and about two thousand hours of other drugs. And, um, you have to have forty hours of continuing education every two years to maintain the license. You have to, you have to adhere to the ethical conduct codes and, um, and all, every, all of my staff, myself, my one staff member, and two contractors, we are licensed in substance use, uh, licensed alcohol and drug abuse counselors. Uh, none of us have a mental health certification. Um, it would be really good if whoever applies for this job and selected applicant, if they are licensed in mental health as well.
So it wouldn't necessarily need to be a counselor or LCSW?
No, it does not need to, it does not have to be a licensed clinical social worker. It has to be licensed alcohol, drug abuse counselor, licensed substance abuse intern. If they are a licensed clinical social worker, they can work in mental health and substance use. We could get a social worker. That would be awesome. Independent or clinical. If we could get an LPC, that would be good.
Spread the word.
Other questions? We entertain a motion that we approve the reclassification vacant position, reception slash educator to DWI screener slash treatment provider.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rendova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Good to know what you're doing.
Thank you.
All right. Item number nine, approve, disapprove to indigent burials, Ms. Rhonda.
Good morning, Commissioners. So today I'd like to see if we could approve two indigent burials, one for turning in Artesia and West funeral home here.
Questions?
So move.
Motion is second to approve two indigent burials, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rendova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rhonda. I know we've talked about having like some sort of a background.
Per var.
Yeah, yeah, like, like of the people that were buried, you know. Are we still?
They have, like, private information.
No, we don't disclose any of that.
You have to look at the obits.
Yeah, I guess.
It just seems so informal.
We're, we're the stop of last resort. All right. Item number ten. Yay. Ordinance twenty-one, one oh seven and twenty-one, one oh eight, draft cannabis regulation ordinance and draft business licensing ordinance. Gentlemen.
So in, in light of the desire for expediency to get this done, we've, uh, come for you to schedule this, uh, the public hearings for these two ordinances on October fifth. Uh, the planning and development committee worked through them. Uh, found no issues with the last drafts. Wanted to move it forward to you all to, to go to public hearing with that recommendation.
Comments or questions on the regulations?
So there was some discussion, or no, I shouldn't say that. There was a comment at the beginning of the meeting. A bit of question about the ordinance's ability to determine where consumption could occur. And then the, the back and forth was, well, alcohol isn't allowed in, alcohol consumption is not allowed in public places, in a park or whatever it is. So, and the state regulates that. Um, so far, this is new territory and there, there is nothing like that in the current state ordinance or, uh, statute. So, um, counties are taking up the baton across the state to try and determine how these, um, ordinances and hopefully at some point in the future legislation will occur. But right now those are silent in the state statute. So the county could consider adopting, other counties have adopted, uh, ordinances for other businesses, uh, alcohol licensing and other things for the regulation of the use and consumption of cannabis. Eddie County could do something similar, um, using those types of guidelines in the ordinance. Right now the ordinance doesn't have anything specific to consumption in public places. It does talk about consumption in licensed places. But in the future, you could amend the ordinance to say something along the lines of cannabis consumption in public places would be consistent with state guidelines for alcohol consumption in public places. And for Eddie County, something like that, right? We'd have to work with the county attorney and whatnot to, to do that. But right now it does not have that language in the ordinance today. Correct? I don't, I'm looking at the county attorney. If at the public hearing on October fifth, if the commission wanted to add language like that, they could.
They may have to republish that if that's what you're gonna do, because that is a major change. It would probably call for some comment from the public. Now, if you want to put that in there now, we've added in here. Recommend the, recommend the passage with that addition. We can put that language in there, get it, print it out. And address that issue on October the fifth.
Is there, is there anything else we're missing as far as, I didn't see any temporary provisions for providing that. Did we, so say, just, we have two alcohol examples. So let's just say it's a wet bar or something like that. You, you get a temporary permit to provide alcohol location. We don't have any of that in here. That's not.
No. It's not our place to do that. The state didn't, uh, yeah.
We're not gonna allow, we're not gonna allow county facilities to set up hookah bars or.
Right.
With a license. But I, I understand.
But I mean, yeah, there's no, there's no temporary provision. Is that going to be an issue? I mean, can anybody move that? Because we're controlling the location of these right now by setting the parameters, three interface from X, Y, Z, whatever. Is there, is there any? Is, is there any chance that that could be an issue later or?
Are you talking about picnic?
Yeah, yeah, I'm talking about like, like a temporary distribution point or something like that.
There, there is a provision in the ordinance that says no temporary locations.
Yes, yes, something like that. Yeah, like the chili.
There is a provision in there that says no temporary buildings, your wedding type sheds, temporary facilities like that. There is a provision in there for that.
Says no temporary.
Yeah, but that's just, that's just.
For says. Can, can, can we do something like where, where they're having a facility that does do the providing the consumption? Uh, can we require that facility to be enclosed with HEPA filters?
It's in there now.
It's in there right now.
What are you saying? What about like a farmer's market? Can I set up my weed store at a farmer's market?
No, that's a temporary distribution.
That would be covered in Stephen's ass. Cause I don't see us setting up a beer corral, right? Where you're smoking a joint in a crowd, cause you can't contain the smoke.
And, and with this being brand new, I mean, I'm sure that we're gonna run into different issues. And I know that the state's already, they've already, uh, filed lawsuits against the state on the statute. But I think it will, we may have to revisit this and look at different issues that have come up, uh, in the future. But basically what we tried to do was follow state statute, uh, with this ordinance. And then there were other ordinances that we looked out throughout the state and even, um, out in Colorado, we looked at some. But it's, the, the biggest difference in like, for example, Eddie County and a county that has zoning, they were able to do a little bit more with it because of that. But without zoning, we can't, you know, we couldn't go down that road, so.
There are a handful of counties in the state, right? A small handful that have passed ordinances.
Right.
The last month, um, anticipating a lot of this unanswered questions coming, coming out. So trying to have provisions in place that follow the state statute and also take into consideration the views and opinions of their citizens and constituents related to substances that are, what's the right word?
Psychoactive.
It'd be almost like.
Cynthia said that, that impaired driving is still impaired driving. So alcohol, marijuana, impair, impair you. So we want the same types of protections for citizens for substances that have been legalized that will impair your judgment of your feelings. So. I was just gonna say, so the public hearing has been set for October fifth or will be published for October fifth.
Correct. Yes, if they, if they vote for that.
Do we have to, do we have to approve that?
Need to recommend the, the ordinance for consideration, approval, potential approval for the October fifth meeting. And then Gay and Tara get that put in the paper and it's gotta run one time, at least fourteen days.
What we need is the commission's recommendation.
Yeah, and say, put it on the agenda and, and vote to put it on the agenda for the fifth.
So, so when we do this, trying to add that language in for the public.
What are, what type of language are you envisioning?
Well, the only, the only thing we really can do is just say that you just can't consume it publicly on Eddie County property.
It says in the ordinance, as we have it, it can't be smoked in public places.
Right, yeah.
I mean, it says that in here. And the public place is defined not, it's pretty broad. It says public parks, public buildings.
Oh, I didn't ever read that.
Yeah.
But that includes parks.
That'd be great.
If it's in there, then I, I'd.
It's in the act, I know. We'll double check it. Public places means general public, a place that the general public has access, includes hallways, lobbies, other parts of apartment houses, hotels that do not constitute rooms or apartments designed for actual residents, highway, street, schools, places of amusement, parks, playgrounds, places used in connection with public passenger transport. And then section.
That's in the definition.
That's in the definitions. And then in section ten, smoking of cannabis in public place, smoking of cannabis products in a public place except as permitted by state law is prohibited.
Can we take that?
Yeah. So we've gotten pretty well tied up.
Yeah, I, I think as, as long as it's following the same thing for alcohol, I don't think it is.
But that, that is the, pretty much the same as alcohol.
Yeah.
Good.
And we've tried to tailor it also with open hours of establishments that kind of coincide with what the bars are. And I guess smoking bars, marijuana bars.
One forty-five, last call for due.
That's right.
I make a motion that we. Well, we, we need to discuss one, one more, one more item here. So we have, we have two facets to this. And one is the cannabis regulation ordinance. The other one is a business license.
Correct.
Ordinance. Is there any discussion on business licensing, on the business licensing ordinance? Or can you give us a little background there? Do we have any discussion on that?
Business licensing, the, really, we didn't do anything with business licensing ordinance. We developed this ordinance back in twenty seventeen and in conjunction with the, the workforce camp RV park ordinance, took it before the P and D. It, it's gonna require every business within Eddie County to, operates in the unincorporated areas to, to register and obtain a business license. The fees are gonna be very minimal on that.
Not included in the ordinance for that?
No, the, the ordinance says they'll be adopted via separate resolution, uh, right now. And some input from you all, I guess, right now, they're set at twenty-five dollars. A, a year renewal, I think. There's a five dollar duplication fee and a ten dollar late fee, I think, is what it was. That's less than the city, city of Artesia, city of Carlsbad, both charge, I think, thirty-five dollars for those. Um.
This is just so that we have record of these residences and have an awareness of what, what's going on in the counties. And if they, if we recognize them and they're not part of the list, then we can petition it to, under code enforcement to comply with getting a business license so that you don't have the pop-up whatevers.
It just helps the county understand where growth is going and so that we're able to provide the services needed in those areas. That and then it also helps them understand that in the county, they're using a different tax ID for gross receipts tax and that, that sort of thing. So that the county's more apt to receive the monies generated.
So we can get our ten, tens of dollars.
It also allows us to make sure that they're up to code and everything is.
Yes, it's fire code, yes.
Yes, fire code, yes.
Problem I have with that, if we pass a marijuana law, now all of the businesses out in the county are quasi getting dragged into this licensing process. And they've operated without having to file for a license and I'm sure once, I'm talking about our small businesses up. Farmers and ranchers out in the county gonna have, have business license?
No.
It has exceptions for agriculture and poultry.
Yes.
I think I got in there. I did, I did have one question on the fire statute, it was a little unclear and just helping me get through here would be appreciated. But it just said that the fire and rescue may, but it's not required to conduct a fire inspection if it needs necessary for the safety, health and welfare of the general public. So it doesn't have to have a fire inspection and are those buildings currently grandfathered? Cause I didn't see any language in here.
Any, anything that's presently there will be, and I don't like the word grandfathered, but. It, 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 I, I am. Yeah, it's really made me feel old. Yeah, they, they will be grandfathered in, they're not gonna have to meet anything that, that wasn't required at the time. They initially began business, um.
Okay, I don't see that in here, but I, I, there's a lot.
As, as the fire code goes, you know, it, we will turn the reviews in their portion over to the, the fire and rescue. And Josh, Jared, their crew will review those. If they feel there's an inspection warrant, they'll go deuce that inspection and then bring the information back to us. Where we will take that and then issue or deny a license. I don't see one being denied, but, you know.
So basically with this, with the business license ordinance, we wouldn't be doing any of the inspections. It's passed on to a different entity. We're just getting the feedback from that entity, whether it needed done and if so, if it was completed, that type of paperwork to show. In order to get your business license.
And, and it wouldn't be any different than if we didn't have the fire code, we'd. Most likely require the state to give us the same.
And if I made the language that I was putting on purpose, so that if you get two thousand businesses coming to your management, it's gonna do that. They are paid by us, those inspections will need to do, high hazard, things like that, will get them on hold up the process where two thousand come at the same time. Getting inspections, even if I want to say do, it gives us the right to, but it doesn't have to for that process. Maybe they want to be able to hold up on that process for these businesses.
So let's just, yeah. Appreciate that. But let's just say I have a business currently operating in Eddie County, I've been operating for fifty years. And I come in to get my business license and I get chosen to be reviewed and looked, am I gonna get? Not, I'm not gonna have my license issued to me.
State of New Mexico can actually automatically come and say, twice a year, I create ordinance or so they could if they want to.
But I mean, is this, is this?
It's not gonna hold up our side of things. We're not, uh.
It's not meant to be for him.
Right.
It's meant to be protective.
Because you've already been in.
If your business, if you come in, you've been doing it for fifty years, but you've been a hazard. If you needed to have an inspection, if you haven't, we're good to go, right?
But again, it's, it's. The good thing for the county is the county can work with the businesses better than the state, the state will.
All right, I agree with that one hundred percent. So under this conversation, the grandfather law does not apply, as I was saying. Right?
Well, it does. New Mexico uses international fire code twenty fifteen right now, those businesses are bound by that, they may, they may live until this longer period of time, right, after we refer it to state.
And again, the intent is not to, to limit or prohibit business licenses, but to make sure that the businesses they're operating aren't a hazards themselves or the citizens. We're not. Careful. The, the. There are state laws that are there for a reason, right, fire code being one of them. This, this business license is intended to help us have awareness of what's going on in the county. For things that may become detrimental within the county. These other businesses have been operating, have been contributing to the county, that's awesome. If businesses are doing things that are detrimental to the county, I believe you'd expect us to fight that out and take action on it. Regardless of what it was, so I don't think the intent is to single any particular business out. But rather have businesses be visible, transparent about what's going on.
And that's why I wanna make sure that this isn't used as a, as a hammer, as the.
No.
As the trash ordinance was intended to be used, right? Cause the trash ordinance was intended for two or three people, but it was so broad, it could have been applied to multiple people and that was two or three years ago. And so, um, that was, that was, that was intended. So I wanna make sure that we're not going down the same, the same road as that. This is something that is, that is enforceable and just across.
Right.
Across all fronts and not, and like I said, not, not meant to be single.
No, it's not meant to single anybody out. And one of the, one of the large benefits of the. The plan, or the licensing ordinance, business licensing ordinance. The, the, really isn't on the forefront of it, I guess, is. It helps for future planning. We can take the information we get from these businesses licensing, it can go into the GIS system. We can find out where these businesses are growing, where the county is moving into certain areas and it helps us plan in those areas as well. With, without that at this point, it, we're hit and miss. We can't, we can't filter anything out. We, we've got no. Program anywhere with things input into it to be able to look at it and say, okay, in, in this area, we have growth here, but in this area, we don't.
The way I'm understanding this is we have this new industry that's coming. And we're going to enact a licensing, you know, protocol. And we're just going to bring all the other businesses up to this same level. Correct? Is that, am I?
Right. That way we're not singling anyone out?
Yes, because I just don't want it to seem that we're being discriminatory as far as this type of.
But if you've been, if you've had a cannibal or tomato stand. Out on a county road and now you've added cannabis to your tomato stand, I'd expect you to change your business license. To meet the, to meet the requirements.
That's back to my point. Because of the cannabis law, we're gonna involve everybody else that's doing business in Eddie County. To come and get a business license. It's almost seems to be like an ordinance in search of a problem.
I don't feel that. I, I feel like it's just meant to be uniformed, is how I hope that this is going to go.
Anything specific to cannabis, it's gotta be everything. I'm not blaming us on that, I'm blaming the state on that, but like everything else, it's to be put on the county to enact on this.
You are, you are a hundred percent correct to the state.
My next question.
Business license. Just would be allowed to listen.
We don't pass anything.
We're, we're, it, it's left up to the state and then the state.
Well, state has.
It's like the fire.
It's everywhere.
Yeah, we're. For Eddie County to have its own fire code, they're able to speed the process up and get it. Otherwise, they're waiting on the state to come do the inspections and things, so.
That part I'm all in favor of.
Right, I am as well. I'm in favor of having local control over that.
I'd much rather be able to call Josh and have him come look at my deal than wait three months for the state to come. I, I, I agree with that a hundred percent. Anyways, I'll probably shut up now.
That's my good idea.
All right, so are we gonna recommend that?
Yeah.
For October fifth?
Yeah.
For the public hearing and we're gonna publish the note, we'll have the staff, public, the administration staff publish the public notice for that meeting. Is that the recommendation?
Is exactly what I was gonna say.
Awesome. You are, you are really, really good.
We have a meeting in a second. Please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cetchen?
Yes.
You're very helpful today, Commissioner Carlson.
Thank you. I have it like a long time ago.
If you have, if you have any questions about any of it, just feel free to contact me or. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate the discussion, very good discussion. All right, moving right along, item number eleven, deputy reclassification. Sheriff Cage. Hey, again, an upgrade. Awesome.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Hi.
Hi.
What we're wanting to do is take a deputy's position and change it to a lieutenant's position. We need more supervision in our patrol division. And with this, this would cover us seven days a week, which we are not able to do right now. The cost will not be, uh, outside of our budget. We'll make absorb it in our budget. It's thirty-four thousand, the difference between lieutenant and a deputy. And with the overtime missing, cause lieutenants aren't entitled to overtime, it's five thousand less than the thirty-four, so it'd be about twenty-eight thousand and we can absorb that. So it's for the purposes of having more supervision in our patrol division.
Sheriff, would you share some of the statistics that you shared earlier about your current level of available supervision compared to other agencies in the area?
Sure. Right now, the sheriff's office has three lieutenants. We want to assign each division. We have an operations division, we have a detective division, we have patrol division. Uh, Carlsbad, which is equal to our size of, um, agency, they have six lieutenants. We're way behind them in that. The difference I see though between the two agencies is, is in the past, Carlsbad has typically had more younger officers and needed more supervision. We had a lot of older senior men and most of them are gone now and we're starting to have the same issues with younger, uh, patrol division.
And so the issue came up with, on patrol and. Having. We didn't have the availability that we need for full coverage, seven days a week, lieutenant we had was being run ragged.
Right, the one lieutenant we do have in patrol, he's covered seven days. Of course, he's not working seven days, but he has to be available for phone calls seven days a week.
So this, 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 it's a, it's a needed role for what's going on and, uh. There's just more happening.
Yes, there's a lot more happening now and we anticipate more going on with some of the things that are happening in the county now.
Is one enough?
For now, we can. We'll project later on that, but one would get us by for, uh, the time period now. Yes. Any questions?
Questions, comments? Entertained motion, we approve the deputy reclassification for.
Make that function.
Thank you. Let's just say, please call below.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cetchen?
Yes, sorry.
Hey, I understand.
I was still. Uh, take a break here.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll leave one for this.
Let's, let's, let's finish the trailing agenda and then we'll take a break about that. Is that okay there, everybody?
Yeah.
Another one, two, two more items. All right, uh, Region Six, your task force, welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Selig.
Wanted to you. Uh, what I have is, this is, uh, the modification to the grant, uh, increasing the grant by twenty thousand dollars. Uh, and this portion of the grant is, uh, my office. And it'll be used for, uh, some supplies and small, uh, relatively cheap equipment.
So you've got more money and we need to absorb it?
Exactly.
Awesome.
Any questions?
Not for me.
Having no questions, we will entertain a motion to re-approve the grant modification.
Go move.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cetchen?
Yes.
As smooth a talker as you are, I'm surprised you only got plenty.
Thank you. Feedback, sir, and I've got some money, Kevin.
Good. Thank you for what you're doing, sir.
Thank you.
All right, facilities manager, reclassification, Mr. Stevens.
Sir, thank you. Mr. Coop, or Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, uh, put this. Uh, agenda request together, uh, to kind of align the facility manager role with various either assistant directors or managers throughout the county. Uh, primary reason is we've had this position advertised for two to three months now. We have made some interviews, um, even made an offer. Unfortunately, it seems the rate of pay seems to be. Where some people aren't willing to give up their day job to come to high cost of living Eddie County and, and make a go of it. So we're trying to. Improve that marketability of the position. It is very important in my department. Uh, even currently, we're stretched thin. Uh, this'll help us, but it also puts that, you know, additional decision maker role, not too dissimilar from what was just approved for the sheriffs. Uh, in the event that I'm not available to make a decision on vacation or whatever, so. Uh, just looking to, you know, balance those things out. In the past, when we put this position together, um, the goal was always to promote from within. Uh, we did that with the first facility manager. Bad luck, passed away last year and so we've just kind of been struggling ever since. And so hopefully this helps us get back to where we were, uh, you know, previous to last November.
This classification would realign the position consistent with the other departments?
Correct.
Or like the, the, the assistant?
Well, we have, yeah, it, it's pretty much equal, like you got your own managers north and south, you know, this is about the same order and probably has a similar position. With this captains and so on and so forth, so just one of those deals. The rate of pay, I've had, I've had a couple of journeyman plumbers, a couple of journeyman. Uh, HVAC type people express interest verbally. Uh, they read through everything and they just, they can't commit to that, to that pay where it's currently is. And so we're hoping this little bump allows that to happen as well.
Questions? Entertained motion, we approve the facilities manager, manager reclassification.
So good.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cetchen?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thanks, Brian. That posted. All right, the last item, uh, on this trailing agenda or on, on this portion of the agenda. Is the letter to U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. For the Commissioners supporting feedback from other folks opposing.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, this letter, excuse me, as it, as it's described here, will show support. Uh, to these other agencies who have submitted more formal comments on the process of listing the lesser prairie chicken. As a, uh, as a, uh, participating, uh, agency, we can do this. Comment period's closed on the first of September. But we can still do that under our, under our, uh, status, uh, as the county. The reason I did this or made this decision was if, you may or may not know, but under ESA. If a comment's submitted such as the prairie chicken likes fresh air and sunshine and forty-two people do that, that's considered one comment. So, uh, instead of duplic- being duplicative on this, can tell you, Permian Basin Association had a sixty-plus page, a comment. Uh, and it makes a long gas, had twenty-some odd pages and then it went down the list from there. But each one of them did cover very extensively with scientific backing of, of their comments in opposition to the listing. And there's numerous other agencies that are the same. And I thought it would be appropriate for us to show comment for our friends here in southeast New Mexico have submitted these comments. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you for coming.
All right, I have the letter here that if each of the Commissioners would sign, we'll get it. Set it out.
Okay, do we need, do we need to approve that's called for a vote here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so like I mentioned, we approve the letter submitted to the United States.
Fish and Wildlife.
Fish and Wildlife Service. Thank you for making a can of corn, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Either way.
The motion in a couple of seconds, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rorova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cetchen?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners, thank you, Gary. All right, I understand that the Commission would like to have a
Five minute break? Come back in.
Yeah, nevermind.
Uh, you tell me, you want an interval.
Five minutes, correct.
Recession, recession.
All right, we'll be back in ten oh seven, according to the little green clock that runs fast.
Ten oh five, according to everything else. Now, a question.
Yes, sir.
If we approve the business.